It's not something I have on the website. I think it's, uh, a, a, a potential dishonest person could have a laundry list of items to pick from because that's the clarity of it. But, uh, it helps us tremendously looking in. You know, we go down to the beach and we've measured this and that and then come back and go, "Oh, man, I forgot to measure the duck." And he gets back, he pulled it up, he measured a duck to three acres.
The duck has to take the place of your site is, if you know.
I think so. That's what I'm, uh, do. And, uh, so, you know, get through, let's go down to parcels, we'll get to, come down to parcels, plus, um, um, new permits, new construction and remodel stuff. Um, there's, there's a lot of interest in that and in that. So, uh, we're just set point now from, uh, uh, from the schedule. And, uh, and I don't want to get, I don't want to name anybody's property and I don't want any of our guys to, you know, put them saying we got to make, well, we got to send some letters and, you know, hey, there's someone that don't respond, someone that don't answer. We have different methods of getting to others and, and, and at the end of the day, we're sending a bill or a draft. Barstek says, "I got ten bills." They don't let me in, but they won't let me look. I'm gonna send the bill, but I'm gonna miss it on my own.
Right.
And then we can have some, yeah, about bringing down every guy. We can have, so, we're just trying to get it right. You know, at the end of the day, we're just trying to. Okay? Thank you, guys.
I see you all in good work.
You're welcome. You, Miss Gash, can we, um, hey, there's one thing I did want to talk about. Uh, if you don't mind, one more, anyway, I want everybody with them. Um, we talked about real property and new developments and how to encourage that. Um, we've not had a subject in this county for long. Um, we've had one, uh, news up. We have, uh, I think there's a strong demand for housing, but it's just, it, it's not, it, it, from a development standpoint and a uniformity standpoint, uh, it's difficult to find a place to go in and find neighborhoods that do learn to, if they're not home to it, that are all the same and will appreciate or depreciate as a unit. Um, and in order to do that, you got to have some developers that are willing to come in and, and, and deal with some of that. Um, I talked a little bit about this with Wanda and I'll continue to feed her the information, but just want to share you a little bit. There's a, uh, there's a destination called CBB. It's a community development district.
Yep.
CBBs are great and very, um, uh, encouraging to developers. Uh, you've got a community, uh, here in the part of the villages, uh, their whole business plan is based on the CBB. It is one of the fastest growing cities in our country for the past ten years. It is absolutely unbelievable and phenomenal to get out and look at. My youngest son, Taylor, uh, just got a job there. He's a recreation supervisor, uh, with buildings. Their recreation budget is twenty-two million dollars for recreation. And this, they go up every year on their tax, their taxable value increases every year. And accompanying along with that, they drop their military rate every year. Think about that. How does your taxable value go up? Your budget goes up and your military rate goes down. They have that much new construction. Remember when we were talking about new construction, then back a hundred percent? Well, the part of the CBB, what CBBs are, um, we come in and, and I was going to say this, uh, podium of a piece of property, we have a hundred acres here. And we own a hundred acres. And they're going, conventionally, they would go in and go, "Okay, we're gonna put our roofs and our infrastructure and all that in." So that, that's another million dollars. They go to the bank, they put the land up, they sign a note, they borrow the million dollars and they come back and they improve this, put their infrastructures in next steps. That's historically how it works today. In a CBB, a community development district, you, you designate this as a CBB. It has a board that oversees it, but the infrastructure is bonded. And a bond is placed on this infrastructure. And the landowners, as they purchase their piece of property, when they hit their tax bill, there's a line item for their bond payment that repays them. No cost to county, it's all in within the district itself. Very complicated, but I've got a little information on it, you got one. Um, I, I, and I'm glad to help with this, with it, if, if something the board is interested in. And, uh, but it would be an instrument that we could potentially present, uh, that may encourage some new developments, uh, and come in and help alleviate some of that expense without any expense to the county. This is not an idea that, uh, uh, hasn't been proven. This is one of the fastest growing communities in the country and it is based, and they don't ask for the ten years. What happened in ten years? Pre-aided? It goes up. Because, uh, that old house they built for a hundred fifty thousand dollars back twenty years ago is now probably worth two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And, uh, it is a, it's a formula that, uh, definitely works and, uh, I'm just simply, uh, I mentioned it, um, I've had some exposure to it through my son and it, it is just a business plan that is, uh, absolutely spurred in the legislation is currently there for it, um, uh, to pursue. Doesn't need anything, you don't, uh, you don't need to have anything, uh, on a state level, it's just you can go through the ordinance process of having that designated. So, um, I'll offer my help if, if I can do the business from that, really. So, uh, one of the ideas in my own consideration is trying to increase your real property by getting away from this volatile, dangerous person property.
Thank you, folks, thank you really.
Thank you, guys, thank you. Thanks for all you do, we appreciate it. Thank you, we thank you.
Okay, just, uh, can we hear the dinner? Um, boss, will Ken have to give you enough?
Yeah, I guess we would. Come on up, boss. You'll take it up or you don't?
Oh.
Um, so, you know, you gotta talk about, give me any things and questions and answers and try to do more, but if you want, if you want to share the values and the board there, like, you've got the power here. Right.
A little bow.
Get up the money. Oh, gee. Uh, I'm here to make a request, I guess you'd say, concerning the, uh, the limit that y'all are in on the hard waste park. Uh, I know that you've had to take a hundred thousand dollars out for a couple of years of, uh, bond out of one cent off the, uh, bond that we have to bailed in the mouth. And you're talking about raising the rate at, on homes for, to a hundred fifty-four dollars a year. Uh, as an homeowner, I don't see that as a problem. Uh, I would be on favor of that because, uh, I use, well, ice cream time of the week. Uh, my concern is, I'm also president of a hunting club. We've got fifty-seven members, uh, hunting club, forty-nine members of that hunting club do not live in Taylor County. They do not deposit any garbage in Taylor County. When they leave on the weekends, they take their garbage back with them to the county they come from. Uh, they have not complained about paying the forty-something dollars that we've been charging to them. And I understand if, if you went to a hundred and fifty-four dollars, you could without changing the ordinance, uh, still charge them a third of what the homeowner pays, which is fifty dollars, around fifty dollars. That would not be out of reasons for these people from out of town. But what I hear from the folks that's in my hunting club and from other hunting clubs, and you can tell us how many hunting clubs there are here in Taylor County? And how many people out of town come in here to hunt? Uh, they say they're gonna stop coming. If they have to pay a hundred and fifty-four dollars to come up here for three and a half months to hunt, to pay another a hundred and fifty-four dollars plus what they're already paying for dues to be a member of a hunting club, anywhere from nine hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars a year. And most of them are carrying, as I said, carrying their garbage back to their home county, where they live. So, uh, the fifty dollars would not be, it'd inconvenience for them. They'd be willing to pay that. The problem I see is, and, and I know that you got a problem denoting which RVs are two or three. Most, you're charging them one, places you go, the way ordinance says, and you charge them one-third of what you charge at home. Well, on that one-third, say that a person lives in their RV more than one-third of the year, which is four months. If they're living there five or six months a year, then they should pay a hundred and fifty-four off. Or if they're living there two months a year, a hundred and fifty-four off. Because they're used as a residence. It might be a, a summer residence, they come down and, and they stay from May to they stay over the middle of October and they go back. Well, they gone more than four months, so they should pay a hundred and fifty-four off. They're general resident out of garbage, out of, uh, trash. But for people that's there for just three and a half months, that is a burden on them. And you would be surprised of how mu- how much money these hunters put into this county during hunting season. They're buying corn, they're buying gas, they're buying meals, they're buying, uh, shotguns, they're buying rifles, they're buying ammunition, they're buying all these things, buying food for a camp. And that's income into our town. And if they say, well, you know, I'll say this, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm going to close down around where I live, that takes money out of our pockets, takes money out of our, reason of the parking, also out of taxes we get from the failed tax. So, I'd like for you to consider, or maybe going to the one-third and make it fifty dollars. And if that is, there's got to be a way. And I'd be glad to work for somebody or work for whoever needs to, to try to designate who these people are, or we can, there's several different ways you might be able to do it. And, uh, our tax collector might know the way to do it, to designate who's living in an RV more than four months out of the year. And then they would be charged a hundred and fifty-four dollars if they do. Less than four months out of the year, then they charge a fifty-four off. The thing about you got on the, uh, plan date, I've got no problem if I tear down a, a barn and I load my trailer up and you go out there and you measure my trailer, sixteen foot long, six foot wide, and you charge me fifty dollars for junk, my wood there, I got no problem with that. But if we start laying, I like to call them by scale, the two hundred something thousand dollars. And you're gonna have to have either one person, one place designated for a scale or by more than one sort of scale. And then you're gonna get yourself into more financial difficulty. But, and I know that it's been said, you cannot, the people that, as far as junk can not take money. There's got to be a way that you can write out a, a ticket and turn the ticket over to the tax collector and either they apply to their taxes for the next year, they'll send them a monthly bill. Now, I know it's a little bit more on the tax collector, but it would be a way of collecting your money. Uh, and I think that would be a fair, a fair way to do something whereby that we could not have to charge these people a hundred and fifty-four dollars. So, I think you're shooting yourself in the foot if you do that on these money counts. Uh, and, uh, it's, uh, it's just amazing, and I know Gary said this, the, the one you made, but I witnessed myself three or four times. I had a man who lived here in town. Told me the other day, he said, "I loaded up my trailer and I drove out to the Harrison Blue dump and I dumped my limbs on the tree that I cut down out there." And he lives in the city of Perry. He does not live in the county, he lives in the city of Perry and he dumped his stuff out there. And how do we stop it? I don't know. The, the stuff that you got about the green stickers, he's got a green sticker, or he did have to come down and have one. He got a green sticker. If I was to dump something, I pull out my wallet and I say, "All right, here's my address." And if you're not willing to do that, take the load somewhere else. The only problem with that is that they're gonna start dumping in the woods. And I see that problem coming too. But if there are not a county residence, there are two residents, they can dump there but charge them an additional charge than what you charge a county residence.
The city needs to build a little outside for my board with that.
Well, that would be great. But, you know, uh, and I, I'm like Gary, I thought two cars back to town, two trucks back to town that dumped garbage. And they drove up to a residence and I know that's where they live. Because they see, they don't wanna put it out on the street and have trouble going out there and rolling a, a garbage can out there for the city to pick it up.
Well, the whole thing is, you know, and we're, I found we're open to a dinner, we have a lot, but some people live in the city and have, uh, property in the county way too bad. So, somebody says, "Out at the, well, well," they could say the same thing, "Well, I don't know, she knows on District Four, but we've got property in, uh, the county on both ends." So, we use the blue frames and the burner and something, we could use any of the rest of them if we wanted to. But I, and I wonder how many people, how many properties in both ends in the city and the county. But, I mean, you know.
There's got, there has, there's a way, there's got to be a way to work through it.
Yeah. Because if we showed our address, the county, it showed us in the city.
Right.
You know, and it doesn't list our addresses, our other four addresses, you know. But it's, I appreciate you coming forward and offering us some suggestions. We're always open to suggestions because, you know, we don't know it all, so I appreciate you coming in.
Well, I, I just try, I try to look out for the, for the county's benefit of these.
That's right.
You know, we've got, I'd say we've got fifty clubs in Taylor County. Fifty hunting clubs, most of them run between fifty and four hundred people. And that's a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah.
And a lot of people going back south and not spending their money up here. I would have their money up here and I hadn't even spent it down there. And it's been seven.
We appreciate your input.
And I, I would, you know, I'd be willing to volunteer my time if I could deal with anybody, so, walk on, I would.
Thank you.
I think we made one comment, boss. You have some very good thoughts. And you, you express some of the same thoughts and questions. We all have our thoughts, but we're trying to figure out a better way to stop it. Now, what I've heard you say is you don't think the people that come up wanting the hunting button, which was checked, they have the one-third of the hundred and fifty-four.
That would be fair. And then if you live there and born for four months and years, you make a full dump, uh, that's fair. But the problem is, I forgot, is how can we administer it? How can we know how long you've stayed there? And how long you know, John Day in Hunting Haven, which is not, think about it from an administrative point of view. We haven't figured that part out. Well.
Some counties seem a lot different.
Yeah. And I don't worry about you about that. You, you just go to Tri County and say, you know, "How often is this peo- person using his beater? This person uses his beater eight months out of the year? You gonna pay for it?"
I've done Tri County, can legally get out of that information. But the person that's got the RV.
Say it's funny, it's so funny.
I think on your, on your power bill, it shows your, this dog's on the usage for thirteen months.
Right.
Not they can give it to you.
Right.
But that's what's wrong.
But now, does Mark have a tax to do that?
Well, there's something, I think this is another day, another, another conversation that we can bump down the dip for the next.
Well, I, I'm saying that, but I just, I wanted to.
Right.
And when y'all have the hearing, if you have a hearing on it, I'll be back there again.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you a lot.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, Mark.
I'm sorry, we're gonna call you Mark. We all have a question. How are you all?
Good, thank you.
Good, 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 good. So, but we're down seven hundred eighty-seven dollars from last year.
How much?
Seven hundred eighty-seven dollars.
There's nothing gross on me. There's nothing here.
Just, just seven eighty-seven, but we're down.
That's okay, that's okay.
Um, and I get, do we, do we want to discuss anything on what we can do?
Do you get any questions?
Yes, I, yeah.
And what we do, what we will have is, Bruce actually has them listed as mobile homes, they're not listed as RVs, but we will have those as anybody who's living there full time. And they'll be charged whatever rate you guys determine, whether it's a one-fourth, seven one-fourth, or even a one-fifty-fourth.
Yeah.
If they get home soon, they're going to be charged for the full time.
But we all have to do that. If they're home.
We do.
RV.
Yeah, but we're gonna get it more often. So, that's a way, that's a way to capture it. Now, how many are there?
We don't know.
We don't know. There may be forty, there may be twenty, there may be a hundred and twenty.
And on top, a hundred thousand dollar price. It's not gonna cost.
It's fair that you've got an RV that you claim is your home sit, you all paid a hundred fifty-four.
Absolutely.
A hundred forty.
All things.
All things, whatever it is. And the past, is that the big way to spend?
It, it has, it's been very far.
Real far.
Yeah.
We don't know that we're capturing all of them.
I would say we're not.
Well, we got to figure out how the people that are not paying need to pay, because it's, it's, uh, stuff will come in, like, oh, we've got so many that need to pay.
Yeah.
There needs to be a process so that they pay this same percentage. And then the ones that have rental, uh, property, and when your rental property sits there vacant for so many months, then they, they would need a discount, the same, the third of the price. And then you're gonna see your whole budget go down. And you start talking about rentals that are vacant, I think you're gonna see a more of a deficit in what we're talking about.
What kind of rate?
And this is another day, another conversation, but I think there's a lot more to it than what a lot of people see.
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, it's, we're out today, I mean, we go at least three days a week, especially now, hunting season, scout season, or kind of the go, and we're gonna catch some, and we're not gonna catch some. It's impossible, the police says. It's, it's no different than policing the garbage coming into the, to the dump. But you change it to the one-fifty-fourth and the fifty-one-thirty-three, which will be a third, and you can, you can raise a hundred and seven thousand dollars based upon last year's numbers.
And that's by residence.
And that would be by residence. You have to, and it's a can.
And all you've talked about, the people doing a coverage by hospital and taking that they're home to get a tax bill for the garbage.
Yeah.
And you don't sell for fifty-five, somebody.
That's right.
And then that person that every seven years, a hundred and forty or whatever they have paid, drops off the tax bill. And it just goes on, it's not a lane, it's not nothing, it drops off there seven years. So, those people get tied up by, with paying them.
Yeah, and, and that, there's a report that you got, you have, you know, had a tent and all that, and everything is all season. And I think last year, from the poverty side, we did eight thousand dollars worth. So, it wasn't, it wasn't a whole lot. Um, but, I mean, it's, whatever the board is, we'll do everything we can, but, I mean, it would be, for somebody to bring in their, I mean, if we, if we wanna go to that position, I know you don't want me to. But, and I'm, I'm gonna use Nathaniel, I'm not sure about yours, but I have never looked at yours, but Nathaniel, they say three one-forties. We talked when I was on the board about taking the one-forty and then knocking those others down to the third, or knocking them completely out, because you're always already paying one time, you can't create trash in two different places at the same time. So, I mean, we've got that conversation that has to be made. That would be impossible, as far as you and I thought yesterday. Our system will not allow to, to look for Sean Murphy's name here, pay the one-forty and then go to Sean Murphy's name over here and say, "Hey, he needs a discount there." Manually, we can do it. STE is gonna be excruciating to do that.
And the, and, we will be.
So, you would definitely need them, yeah.
We need simplicity, simplicity and fact.
Best way to go, I think.
Exactly.
If you're in result, whatever it wants to be, you need a hundred thousand, the easiest thing, you can go to the one-fifty-fourth, the fifty-one-thirty-three. It's easy for me to say because I'm not sitting in your chair and got people calling and saying, "Oh, we can go up fourteen dollars a month."
Well, see, I've had people that contacted me too, and I don't want to spend most of my, best of time talking about falling ways. But, uh, the people that have contacted me, you know, it, it's not fair for me as a homeowner to pay the full price. And you've got these people that are getting by with a lot less than their kind of, like, there's much more garbage than I am, I'm sure. And so, I don't mind you going up on mine, they say to a hundred and fifty-four, but it's not fair to me to not, to not make everybody else go up as well. And so, I see, I think both sides.
Absolutely.
I can see both sides, but I don't think there's an easy, um, fit. And no matter what we do.
No matter.
Everybody's not gonna be happy. And you're gonna have people that are not, we're still, people that are not gonna be happy. So, our, we were elected to make the best decision that we can.
For the county.
That's the fact of the matter. And that's where I'm at, make the best decision for the whole county, not for a few, uh, collect people or a few collect people, but what's best for the whole county. And we'll get into that, uh, I mean.
That's, I mean, I, you have a tax.
We don't, we don't, we take all your.
Oh, yeah, and we'll do whatever we can, you know, and we don't, we don't have a problem. Hey, they're getting a deal, though. I pay two hundred and forty in the city and they don't pick up my B and D. I've had concrete sitting out there where they used to pick up, been sitting out there for four months, all just finding a way because a man needed it for something and he came and broke it up, guy.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's two hundred and forty dollars a year, I think.
I can accept.
They get the deal.
Bring it on out there, you do it.
So, I can't, I don't have a green card. Oh, by the way, on the green card, this is what I was missing, I didn't want to say this, on the green card, as a general rule, either Wanda or Danny will call us and we'll make sure that they are paying the landfill. If they are not paying the landfill, they have to come over, we have to add the landfill to them, then they can get a green card. So, when you change the green card, it didn't make the world crazy, it actually helped some because now people are having to come in, work base will capture some of that one.
I'm against giving out a green card and a sticker, but.
Right, right.
We, we, we really don't need the card, we need nothing but a stick. Do a sticker and be done with it, catch the pass in the land.
Yeah.
A lot of, a sticker's better, it's fixed.
It's a fix, yeah. It might cover it, yeah.
That's right, that's right. So, it's something, I think I want to everyone, if I may, that originally the plan was to give one card and a sticker, but then we had citizens who came forward and said, "Well, I have three vehicles, or I have six people in my family." And we were instructed to give extra stickers or extra cards. So, we ended up giving multiple stickers or cards to, per one, except that was our fault. Why, why did I say it was anyone's fault? But I'm gonna make it work. Because we all understand, we listen to people and, "How do you know? What kind of, I mean, how do you know that six people are three corners?" It isn't all, we didn't ask for proof. We, so, you know, I take responsibility for that.
Well, I, I just want to remind, you know, in an attempt to help our citizens, because I got different reasons. And I would say the majority of our citizens were honest. I have trust, trust, I get that. Um, or because there are multiple people living in the household and everyone falls off the track. Our attempt to help those citizens may have enabled other citizens to get their hands on a sticker or a card, but it, I don't think that matters at the end of the day, if it's a sticker or if it's a card, except that if we give out multiples to try to help our citizens, that does create the opportunity to share it out with somebody else. Because they do.
Absolutely. And the gentleman that's doing the garbage pickup, he actually comes to our office, we make sure that they have that, he turns that into one that, that there's another getting out there, but, but there is, there's a, a fee is getting paid, whether it's the forty-six, sixty-seven, or the one-fourth.
Well, thank you.
And absolutely, if y'all need anything, call me.
Thank you.
There, you call.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Y'all agree with that?
Okay, we're moving ahead, so, um, now, talking more ahead and then we have a time to talk about the whole project plan.
Well, can you look at my book?
Well, can you look at my budget, it increased five thousand one thirty-two, plus five thousand, or ten increase, and that's only for the retirement increase. But I wanna remind the board, all this stuff you send in over there from me to collect, if I come to the point that I've got an obligation to fulfill that obligation, if you guys accept the deal, the garbage and the RV stuff and all that kind of stuff, then I'm gonna be asking you for additional money to, in the power, you know, to do that.
Fair enough.
And I just want you to know again, Tom, right now, y'all have no idea how many will go to the incinerator and bring us back tickets to be paid. They don't pay it, or if we want to do it, they don't pay it. You know, there's a lot of things there that the board don't realize, we found out on boatman's site. You know, you got crap every one of those sites, every month. So, at the end of the month, if that person has went to the incinerator, and he has four hundred dollars and yet paid it, what are you gonna do, you gonna pay him off, and go and pay it? There's a lot of work there.
Yeah, and that's something, and maybe, we're not here, but I did bring that up, that's some of the things that had been discussed, of how much more of a burden it would put on, on your office, and how about if they got that right? And how you gonna collect, and how long, and what things, things do you have to do to collect that little bit of money? So, I think we gotta form a time comp, we're gonna be very careful that we consider all the office, that we don't actually spend more money trying to collect that amount of money.
And I, I looked at the ordinance that, that y'all were looking at, and I contacted Tom, and he's fixed his legal trip. The, the whole purpose of this, for me collecting it, is through COVID laws. If you ever have to see this, it's going to be collecting, you have to pay a forty-dollar fee just to follow that citation in the county. And if the board does not, for example, that's adjusted, which is that, you gotta pay no ten dollars on that, if you pay fifty dollars, they are not one down that. So that's why it's important that you keep that, uh, those repoing portions.
Right.
So the court system that, that, and they do it in the recording, I started to be recording the part, which is fine, so that way, uh, the county can not run anymore. That's fine, and that's gonna be the same way on boatman's site. You know, those boatman's site, if you would get that list from one that she sends it in on the ticket, and sends up tickets, the original ticket. So I got somebody from that, how that ticket, office now, she monitors that, and if they don't pay, and they're thirsty, she, if she's got home, we have to send everyone that's out of state party to the state highway safety, to get their batteries and all that. And we have good rapport with Georgia. Those girls at highway safety, they know what their, the tickets are for, they send that back to, I told them one the other day, and they have to, uh, hit a officer like that, because now, another buyer, that's, they know what the laws are, and, and that it may not be legal for us to get that out of town. But I think like Florida did, we can have that information through government agencies, and get that information, so we're gonna be contacting them to, to blow it over, so if the agency, the government, you know, pay the terms, we're up to do that. If that, if that happens, no exits anymore, y'all have to off, or he's not gonna do it.
So we'll have to think something else, you don't have, uh, you probably have, or maybe the same one out, Florida and Georgia, um, but, you know, they, they, it didn't really work well, and you don't have to be at the end of the world.
But it will all work for us.
Yeah, it is, yeah, I agree. Anything else? Okay, well, let's do this, let's have another, a ten minute break, and then come back, and we'll discuss our capital, uh, projects, and then the hospital, of course, will come in at twelve-thirty, and maybe they'll be a little bit early, and maybe we can get, get out of here today.
So, what?
Ten minute break.
Ten minute break. Now, that's, that's a red, that's, we're picking, all the way, from anybody that wants to pay. Anybody, any red, contract, driving, and business.
We're gonna take a shift tonight.
Yeah, we're just, um, I don't know, I should.
So that's a good, good, pretty good, I'll see them see.
Well, I first went. The way you're doing, all the other, yes, but I was ready, because I, 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 I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, thank you for being here, you know.
That would be a crown hat, I, I, that would be a crown hat, so that's a must have.
I know it's hard, bad, it's not that. Somebody in there? Yeah, I don't know, it's, no, 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 check it out. Now, a minute.
That's crazy, something like.
Yeah, we got people that live down there, still, or come down here, looking about, that's the plan, and about, you know, anything, see over an RV, you know.
Okay, there you go. My booth? Oh, yeah, come here. Where you at, you forget? Yeah, over there with Tico. Yeah, 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 you know, and Tico came over and talked to me, uh. What, great.
I wish that I'm over here, but you sit far out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm on there. So you stayed most in Southside County?
Yeah, I'm pretty much, uh, I live right there, and, uh, yeah, it's pretty cool.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, yeah. How you doing? Work sleep, work sleep syndrome, I hear everybody.
I mean, well. Well, I said, I'm Bill, I'm working, you know, I got my, my old hair, and Jared's got eight of them, and, and over there, and, and if I didn't, uh, um, family and gang all come down with their buddies every once in a while, I have a market, it's coming, they're with our, I, I can, I can, I can, we got so many of them.
And I'm gonna run now, but this is a tough conference, and, and they're gonna come for, I went almost the whole hour, they didn't have any last one, too, they got more of that.
We've known the same one.
Oh, yeah, they're off the boat, they're there, they're, they're gonna get, they're gonna, and we never complained about it, when they pay that one forty, and the thing was gone, they, we're gonna start, we're gonna start, so, and this one's something, they'll be a lot, they're one thousand, but, okay. My place kind of weird, I'm here to do.
So I brought, you know, I mean, I brought a couple of them, you know, for one of the years, I think I drew. I had another couple of them, I did, I operated, and I, I, four years, and then I blew it all down. I've got a lot of people, but that one four, I won't go on the site, but I say, you, I don't know, something, it doesn't matter how much, dude. I operate the same thing, I don't want you to let me do that, I'll tell you. I'm, I'm. One more, for me, look, we need to get everybody, yeah, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I don't pay either way, but you're talking fourteen dollars for talking one trip to MetLife. You're talking one piece, two times a cigarette, but I'm okay with the one forty, fourteen dollars for.
Yeah, yeah, it's funny, it's a special one.
Thank you.
Well, that's a bigger twenty dollars, you know, that's money. Now, and I only think of that, I'm, I'm, without. Two one four, uh. The rest of them, they're. Y'all got the, the market off, that was, that was.
He sure it was, absolutely.
Ah, ah, I, I bought that thing, I bought it for, um, get rid of it. I thought it was.
You don't do any, not, we may have planned that now thing, you hear me?
How about you talk, about reading?
That's a good, nah.
Low end of the share. For twenty or two hundred, I'm getting one of them, that and I like, for a while. Good one. We gonna have the same power, but one another way, I look, so we get my own ticket too, which size is a little bad.
Well, it's a, it was a value, we had to make sure that we not give us that low or high.
Well, what does that those people back, they go, oh.
Then he's gonna learn how to drive.
And this other one, the pay for one forty, it's not very, very difficult.
Well, y'all was going out by, by, uh, y'all get. In a couple of years, we're gonna call it, oh, I'm gonna make work here, yeah, I, I was going ahead and, uh, uh, yeah, everybody got a problem, we, uh. But they come around, got a normal glass, a lot of problems, but it's. Well, yeah, this is right, but that one, ten, yeah, 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 yeah. Like, this is all the most classic one, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta buy. Right, I mean, you get, you know, it's. It's a classic, yeah, I think, if you are, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're. It's like, and we got a. Look on that, yeah, everybody.
Yeah.
The cat's burrow in a month. And you know.
Yeah, she's over there for a minute.
When you get out of the car, I mean, help like you tell.
Well, she could've been around the block.
And, you know, just like you can't.
Yeah, that's crazy, that's crazy, look, give me.
Oh, okay, I made it one time.
Oh, yeah?
So I'm not sure. That is, you have one, all one tree, I was there, I was there, I mean, I'm gonna tell them that, you know, all forty six, he didn't say he gets it, I had to. That's what's.
He probably, he probably got a tree or two, he don't care.
I got a number, this thing, I have sort of five big towers, and they're all in the mustache, and all the final, they seem to be, no, all the final, I heard, I heard.
Yeah, he's.
Three or four, big cross like a line, going, it's going back to see. And then all three or four, who's been in town, who's a few, and they come after all of their barns, so their barns, I'm telling you, myself. I mean, the thing is, I get you, that's everybody, I'm talking to them, yeah.
We all not take my big old pine tree, to me, that was still there.
Well, you can lift the sides, you can lift the sides of the hard ground, it makes it bigger for you.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, I think that's a good enough, that's a, all right, there, don't bring it up.
There be a, there be a, there be a.
We don't, they came in, and they let them sometimes, they stop at the bar.
But now he has, he has, he needs his momma, they show him shop. They do, yeah. They don't look at it, come on, man. Good shop.
Oh, good shop, yeah.
I mean, because he.
Oh, yeah, yeah, everybody.
It, it all depends on it, you need to know something, you ask him, and he thinks he can help you do it, but if you don't ask him, you should do this.
Yeah, if you look at, like, you know, on, anybody got one.
Good. And then put it, uh, to the rail, I was barking, I think I was barking, and him and my son, he, he, he's gonna, gonna be the cut in my hair, I put my hair, like that. And he, he still has it in the head, right, I go, you start going with my head, big z, you know, man.
Yeah, he, uh, he was pretty bold, he, and we were all working in jail, and he said he's gonna fix it, take it away. He drove in a great big old, same as still bold, like they ran on, like that. As soon as we walked into the store, we were out, we were talking, or, 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 I read the book, oh, that's the one, uh, I read, said, I'm out on the plate, and I'm so, I'm talking, so. Then you got to grab the bread, poke that, and step on it, hey, that's out on.
Hold on, just a minute.
I'll get further than that.
Yeah, bring it up, yeah.
He learned a lot. Going all the time, but I have a hotel, right? Where the door, you know, I, 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 you know, I. So far, I'm there, I have, I have, I enjoy it. I'm not learning more, I'm just doing work, and I'm a man. Well, all right, you got stuff, you got everybody to deal with.
Okay, well, then, yes, ma'am, okay, uh, uh, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. I can't do it all, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, uh, I know, but, yeah, he's got me rather than, uh.
Okay, well, are we ready to, yeah, okay, so, um, hang on, let's go back, let's, let's talk about my budget. That's my, that's about website, I notice I belong, but, yeah, we'll have to do your thing, you got to do, you got to make your website. ADA compliance with lines, and, the handkerchief, and, uh, hair and hairs, and all that. I understand, on the other hand, if you got one person, make them have to have a computer, it's comparable to look up here.
They have a reader, quite a reader, right.
Uh, the cost of it, they got one person, it's course making nervous. Got one person that we've been able to talk to, that can provide a software that does that. Now, my question is, you go out there and contract that one provider, and what happens to some actually, and you can't maintain that. And he's gonna go in and redo your whole website, and I think it's about five thousand dollars to do our.
Our focus, okay.
But you got to use all bigger operating on the website, you got all the voice shrub, the. And then, I think, like, fifteen hundred, two thousand, every year, to maintain that website. So I guess what you have to do, when you add something to the website, you got to definitely him to get it put on there. Unless you've got somebody that seems actually put it on there, we hadn't done that for us, but when I was at the last conference, they, everybody, it was about four o'clock, says, law is following us. For not being ADA compliant on your website. So I didn't want to have law that followed me about that, so we went ahead and we started doing what we needed to get that done.
So we had a conference call last week with a company, and got some preliminary quotes that seemed quite high. Um, in the meantime, what we've done is, we have updated our website for, um, divulgability information for different, um, for Chrome and included different browsers that have to be, um, ADA compliant, but after our conference call with this vendor, I asked for Lisa to reach out to surrounding counties to talk to them, um, and some of the constitutional officers to see what they were doing. Um, with hopes of finding maybe a more, um, a solution that was a little more affordable, because our quote was quite high, and it is not in our budget for next year. So that is something we are trying to work through as well, um, and in attempt to avoid any type of lawsuit, and I had received some information, I believe a procedure letter from South Florida that made me anxious about being ADA compliant, and, of course, we protested. So this is a challenge that we are facing as well, and, um, it, it's unfortunate that our attempts to provide as much information as possible makes us also vulnerable to a, a lawsuit if we don't be, um, compliant.
It's, you know, obviously, there's something that's gonna have to be done, because we got so constitutional officers, and I'm sure that the rest of them, and I was just wondering that if, um, that if we should be looking at vendors and talking about, say, we've, we've got fifteen symptoms that we need for how to get a, a price, and everybody to be on the same thing, as far as this one's one, this one's this one, this one's this one, is that how we're going about it?
Well, that's why I asked for you to reach out to the other constitutional officers to see what they were doing, not only to make sure that we understood the requirement, to see if there would be any benefit as far as pricing.
Yeah, well, what, what I found out when we started making this, you know, a lot of my programs is through these, uh, what, what association. And it's my understanding now, this vendor that we, we just got through this account, installing this, is the association is talking to him about, cause they currently post my website, the association does, and they are talking to him about, uh, making this program for part of the association, so we can keep our website with the association and go through that, that way, it may cost more, but it is very, very bad, that when we find out that you got one vendor that can provide that stuff, in fact, well, he's the owner, and I know us, that we just played. And if something did get sealed in the product, what are we gonna do? Or if you don't have somebody that can back it up, that's happened a million times. So it makes me very uncomfortable, knowing the video, you know, and so if you contract with our association, I'll be more comfortable with him, with us doing that. But right now, I'm not sure what's going on there, but we got them all, we really, yeah.
We're all gonna think, man, they.
It's that old, it's that, yeah, ADA compliance, you know. And I, I have written down the actual, the actual, um, law that may make, that I did ask the vendor, because my concern is that if we don't, if we don't buy this product from a vendor, or if, I don't know, what happens to that information, then I, if it makes me feel very vulnerable if we don't contract with this vendor, that we're not putting ourselves in a more vulnerable situation, because we didn't purpose out the product, or any data.
Another thing that's really, um, put a lot of hardship on us, is, you know, they passed the law about convicted offenders. That they can get their rights restored, if they need to drop it out of. Now, we have to do a program with the Department of Corrections, so they notified us, they notified us, the defendant, we need to leave from prison. And then public records, we said, kill them, because you got all these people out here, in these data cities, that want to do work with them people, and get some money out of it. So you got, well, I'm here wanting this, I'm making money, and here, I'm gonna kill them, I hope they'll bow out, and we can comply with them. So we got to track some, some, like, we're going to make that off. And I'll tell you, on what I read, they're still talking about trying to have it so that, uh, that'll get the rights back until they pay rent or two. Well, they gotta pay everything, where, but what they made up. And they already got it like that, because they haven't had rent, which is. It was revealed, it naturally addressed what they had to comply with, but now they come back and a legislated state, you know, has said, that whatever was ordered, it's, you know, had to be complied with. If they ordered to pay, probation, uh, pay all those things and stuff, they pay it, restitution is part, and we have a song, because restitution pays through probation. And when that comes, and they send prison, they, they send all their records out, they don't, they get no bill, how much restitution, and that, so a lot of people will go through the process because we don't know how much restitution's up and paid. So we, they are trying to get it so probation's fine, and that's what the judge is appreciating, or if probation's wrong, so he got paid, so it's a send up there, and we go in and get that restitution, so they can get it, you know. So if it isn't the law of warfare for us, that has to try, seems to add to us, who's not one that I'm concerned. Right, right, I'm not sure I understand. So, you know, we got all issues.
I'm glad you see that.
Yeah.
We're gonna take the paper, look, space, we're gonna, uh.
It's a something from also, if, if they're ready, they're gonna come off. Now, can you step down and see, if everyone, if you, I think our chair should be, you, come here.
She and her, we're, we're, they, they.
I wait, I'm still about to, about to.
Ask him how long.
Now, we're meeting again, so, uh, the third, at nine o'clock, and we're gonna talk about some of our departments, you know, or, or, that, 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 sir, about the executive side department, what their needs are, those departments, and, okay.
I think everything's been identified within the budget, or within the, your capital improvement plan, um, anything that is highlighted in yellow within this document is not within the budget, and would be an additional request. Um, I would say that a general rule of thumb would be that if the department within this document, if it is listed under local funding, and it is not a general fund basis, then we would use one cent sales tax, or we would request the use of one cent sales tax to fund that household purchase, we didn't really identify it within this document. But I believe that is what the, um, the fund that we use this current typical year, and we would, I would say, requesting for next two years. And, um, in your budget, I'm, okay, four fifty-three is a list of what we currently have, funded for one cent money to pay for.
Four fifty-three.
So as an example, um, the, the actual breakdown by department starts on page, uh, six, I believe, six. Starts on page six, um, an actual breakdown of the department and the actual cost of the capital improvement that we're asking for the capital purchase. Um, and we tried to plan out for the next five years, we will be bringing a five-year capital improvement plan to the board as well, once, um, we get some feedback from the board on the particular requests, and, um, this is an attempt to, to, um, to supplement our own infrastructure needs. I will say that things like telephone system, um, replacement of servers, replacement of HVAC units and pillars, all of these components of your capital request are the end of their useful life. So it's not, um, some of these things are a launch, and some of these are absolutely necessities, but even if you look on page eight, under environmental services, um, we feel like it's necessary to, to replace compactors, to replace fencing, um, to replace heavy equipment, um, we feel like these are all necessities. Um, under sports complex improvements, um, I know that, the, the security cameras and solar lighting, now we will be requesting a FERDA grant for those actual items, where we still, we still left it within the CIP, um, I would, I, I would say we can plan some of these improvements, or when we secure the funding. Uh, the wooden bridge, um, and the wooden bridge and office replacement, that's the replacement of the wooden bridges and the decking around the office because of the amount of, um, this natural decay that happens over time. Um, the panel drain system that you see under, um, under animal control, the reason we have a lot of issues with keeping that drain open, and what we're asking for, the concrete pad, is to help limit some of the trash that goes into the drain, because it's just dirt there. And, um, we're trying to help with our drain system, um, that has been forced out pretty often. On page nine, under public works, capital improvement, um, there are, the gravel truck is highlighted, that was something that was requested when we went through our strategic planning section, um, we were actively fighting for that, um, I believe that this would help our operations tremendously having that piece of equipment, especially when it comes to laundry, nothing, things like that. Um, again, under public works, that would be one cent funding that we would be for that, um, county extension, we did add in the parking lot resurfacing. That initial number payment higher than we had really anticipated, um, so we have not obtained, you know, the quote, or the bid for this, this is, some of these numbers are not absolute, it's just our best guess, with the hope that it would actually come in over the map. Um, page ten is airport infrastructure, um, at the top part, that funding comes from airport revenue, and that's not necessarily, um, you know, coming out of our, our home reserves, that's airport revenue, those funds are restricted under grants, um, that is basically, um, grants and their associated masters. And then under Taylor County Jail, they need a replacement pillar, and that's a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Page eleven, we have received, um, word that we may need to, will most likely need to replace the HVAC units at the VA clinic and at Phoenix Community Center. And then numbers again are pretty good estimates. Um, the cost of paying the exterior of this building, um, is approximately at seven thousand dollars, we will be seeking green grant reimbursement for half of that, but that is first come, first served, and that's not a guaranteed reimbursement. And then at, um, the bottom of page eleven, it's just a recap of the department and the funding source.
Well, what I'd like to see is, 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 is a chart, here's a, one, two, three, four, five, we have the, seven, seven, and then down with that ten, Thomas, are the things that you absolutely have to have, and obviously, they will be cutting it quicker, and then other things, you know, wouldn't be accurate, or something you do absolutely can't live without. And then that, I mean, it's easy for us to look at it and see if we can do that in budget, or, say, next year, we got, maybe next year, we got this system there. Um, just like on, um, air conditioning system for the community center, if they go out and they off, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, they still have air conditioning, but they didn't, and, and it's probably just past a year, and I'm on it, and I think it's twenty-five years. But I mean, this is something that, you know, may not be, this is critical right now, but.
Well, they anticipate, well, and, and here's the logic that we're using, and will we have a five-year at RAP CIP that we, we can write Thursday, and work this, to review? The concern that we have is, if we don't get to a point where we try to get ahead of some of these purposes, if, if we have, if, if, say, at the veteran, the VA clinic, if one day, next year, say, eighty-two thousand, and we don't have the funding secured, then we, we have to, we get in emergency situations where they can only go so many days without a, and we try to make emergency purchase, or, you know, or after money contingency. So this is really just an effort to plan for things that are, you know, items that are at the end of their life.
Yes, I, I understand, but for sure, you know, this year, we're looking at what we absolutely got to have, but a lot of plans, that's, and then they plan, so we're, we're, so we can. Work towards that.
Now, let me just say, I'm, I'm, uh, found HVAC question, and we budgeted that seven thousand dollars, that's, then, I'm still, I'm thinking, yeah. Make some roll over, same, have it in the budget, you can put it here, and you put it in the contingent, put it here, and then you don't have to get to the contingent later on. If nothing doesn't break, well, you know.
Well, that is just an entire year.
An entire year is longer.
It's, it's okay, but I will say that, um, for example, the library roof, um, we had a seven out of ninety worth tape scenario, and I know there was some raised eyebrows, what is it going to cost, if you think, I don't know, so it didn't, it wasn't even near that, so we had to run into budget, we were able to, you know, obtain quotes, go through, you know, the best method we can, at the lowest price that we can, it was planned, it wasn't, you know, planned at the last minute, the work's done, and, you know, and the roof wasn't, I mean, it was still there, it was still intact, we just knew it was at the end of its useful lifetime, so rather than trying to eat out another year, or two, or risk damage from leaking, or et cetera, you know, the, the decision was made to move forward without roof replacement. So that's the type of logic in the back that we use to move forward, um, so some of these items, you know, like our phone system, the phone still rings, you know, where is it at the point where it has too much age on it, that we cannot obtain replacement parts? A lot of the displays don't work, um, so sometimes it's hard to even know, you know, whether it's, if somebody calls you from inside, if the display doesn't work, we have to memorize steps to take to save a voicemail, because we don't know which set to which, because the screen's black, I, it doesn't work anymore. Those types of items, we would like to replace.
That they have a need to, and, uh.
I hear that from Ted, uh, to tell us, yeah, the one you just did, that sounds like that's something you need to do, you know, uh, for me, I don't know if that, um, Dr. John, there's, there's more, I can't tell her, six months, but uh, you, it depends on people, you know, so you and your assets are related to us, um, but, yeah, um, so. So I still waiting, are y'all waiting?
Uh, yeah.
I like, I know that's something that's really important, I like.
I think it had to be replaced over the minutes of long, since it needs to be replaced apart. So me and Mark, we can replace that also with a blast gear at the end of the year. Reports is on ours, everything, we paid for all that until we do have a replacement. And it picks up the times for all the courses from there to the end of the night. I think about a third of service day, every morning, so it's sometime another what we got in there now would be capacity and you'll have to do something about it.
Your phone's just worked pretty good from when you got?
Well, it's close to half the time.
Oh, so we don't want to go that route?
Well, I don't know if you belong to something, but there's a...
Do you know?
Not our, our, you know, placeholder now.
We have trouble with that.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Sorry, you.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to come in and do this presentation and express some remarks in terms of the hospital and the financial situation. And allow some time to show you some of the things that we're doing. Before, we want to show you the situation, share the proposed higher capital plan. I think some of y'all, we've had some discussions in the house. I'm going to talk to you all about it, what we're planning at the house. And then a request that perhaps you consider part of that, almost a sales tax to help the hospital in the future of the hospital. And that's a particular thing we want to point out in that that relates to our relationship. And that's the first slide I'll take. The second slide is our comparative income statement. And again, on several things, we talked to you all in this, but we wanted to go back and try to show you what's happened over the years. In two thousand and fifteen, the, all the patient revenue and other revenue went from fifty-four million dollars down to sixty-three, down to fifty, down to fifty-eight, down to fifty-five. And then multiple should have caused that. There have been some declines in service, you know, the patients improved. But the major has been related to reimbursement in Dubai, Medicare, Medicaid significantly, and the other insurance, which has moved away from hospital payment to more Medicare and other things like that. So you'll see that where we ended up in nineteen was with a total revenue of fifty-five million, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is significantly, or twelve million dollars, twelve million dollars, whatever, than prior to this. And obviously, a big part of what was affecting, in fact, was by the insurance, the third-party payers like Medicaid, Medicare and other payers. In two thousand and fifteen, there was forty-two million, four hundred thousand, forty-one million, fifteen, seventeen, thirty-nine million, six hundred thousand, and thirty-eight million, and then thirty-six million in two thousand and nineteen. Basically, a drop in those contributions of about six million dollars where the revenue can actually drop, although eleven million dollars, twelve million dollars. And reflective of that is the net patient revenue where in two thousand and fifteen, it was twenty-three million, six, forty-six, you know, sixteen, twenty-one million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, seventeen, twenty million, four hundred and three thousand, eighteen was nineteen million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, and then nineteen million, one hundred and forty-two thousand. So again, a drop of about four million dollars over that power plant, which is a little, it shows you the difference between what our current revenue is, this backdrop, was four million dollars. Our operating expenses, if you look at it, were twenty-six million, a change, fifteen, twenty-four million, a change, seventeen, twenty-two million, eighteen was twenty-one and a half, well, a half million. And right at twenty-one million, so we've actually reduced in those five years, you know, five million dollars in operating expenses, which significantly gone down and really set a curve of what the reimbursement has dropped. The losses are clearly staggering. I mean, operating losses were two point five million, two point one, right at ten million, one point six, almost one point seven, and one point eight in nineteen. So again, what's going on has continued to go on, you know, if we go back into fourteen and beyond that, with those things, things will happen. Medicaid additions are supplemental from the state and federal government, the hospital Medicaid. And those funds have, as you see, were around seven hundred, a little over seven hundred, five down to four, up to about five hundred and fifty thousand, one thousand three hundred and eighty-seven. That amount of money doesn't really supplement the difference between Medicaid and what it costs us. For example, I pulled some data from seventeen to clear. And in Medicaid, we were paid four hundred and thirty thousand, traditional Medicaid managed care was two point five, the cost of providing care in Florida, was four hundred and twenty-nine million. Medicaid managed care was two point five million, almost a million dollars, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand in Medicaid dollars, where they have Medicaid, but they Medicaid it as a real ability provided. And then the uninsured, in that category, was two point, over a million, two point four million, five million, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. All the payments received in seventeen to cover that cost of care, that's not harder, which was six point four million, we received two point nine million dollars from that. So that's four million of that was unreimbursed, unreimbursed. And that's cash, three million dollars in cash that it costs a hospital to provide care to the traditional Medicaid, the managed care, the Medicare and Medicaid eligible and uninsured. That's a lot of money when you're home, never like to, we're only running, you know, in fact, in seventeen, I only ran twenty million dollars. Because that was, you know, three million dollars out of twenty cash that was taken out. And that's consistently been the same moving forward. Gone here, we talked about the Medicaid addition. We do get the four hundred and fifty thousand support from Taylor County for the end app. And transit contribution should be at roughly nine. So the total non-operating revenue was in the one point one, one point one, about eight hundred and one. And about that to date, we paid eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in un audit for nineteen, which was June first, eighteen to May thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. And then when you get to that bottom line now, you see that what's, the loss of non-operating was almost one point four, nine hundred thousand, one point one million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, and nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand just last year was the loss. A little bit in Medicaid, Medicare being in charge, electronic medical records. That really didn't play a first game in fifteen, I mean, fourteen. But now, personally, not meant to maintain the electronic medical record. And lots of Medicaid recoveries, as you'll see. And lots of Medicaid recovery is something I'll talk about in two eighteen, which we need, was eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, one million in seventeen, six hundred and two thousand in eighteen, and nine hundred and forty-two thousand in nineteen. In two thousand and eighteen, we received one million dollars, one million nine thousand dollars from Medicaid, which was recruitment of what was owed to the hospital after an audit between two thousand and five and two thousand and fifteen. So that one million dollars really covered ten years of amount. The way we received it, we couldn't really allocate it fast, it was just a lump sum at the end. So that's why you see Medicaid recovery, which shows that they're actually, in two thousand and eighteen, there was a four hundred thousand dollar profit, it wasn't, the loss was really six hundred and two thousand dollars. This just was recruitment of mine, all the way back from fifteen. You'll see that if I can go back to fifteen, the loss in fifteen was eight hundred and seventy-three, six hundred and sixty-six, one million in seventeen, which was a little over, eighteen, which is really two hundred and two thousand. And then the un audit was one hundred and forty-two thousand. I'd also like to point out that during these years, as part of the agreement with TMA for TMA's contribution, which is cashed up in fifteen, making sure it was four hundred and forty-seven thousand, sixteen was three hundred and thirty thousand, seventeen was five hundred and twenty-one thousand, and then in eighteen, it was two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And that's based off that loss before Medicaid line was there. And then as it stands right now, those numbers have been running, but it probably will be in the four hundred thousand or over four hundred thousand. Would probably be the contribution from the hospital.
That's too bad, we're not seeing two thousand.
We don't know, there's a form that we worked through with TMA and that number comes up. For instance, in eighteen...
Yes, the audit connection, I mean, roughly is half of the audit loss. You can guess who that number is.
That's what?
That's what you get there. That's exactly, that's a cash infusion from operating revenue from TMA's resulting of the agreement negotiated with the bank.
We don't know what that number will be yet. The next page, I'll have a quick look. Yeah, that one, okay, okay. Next is relating to, we'll relate it back to the detailed project capital plan that I handed out to you, I'm just going to talk a little bit about that. In two thousand, currently, right now, you have, I think, right at two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, which you have a lot of cost to replace the current chiller. We're in the last bit of getting that out of the one and her staff will work really hard with us trying to work through and make sure that we did everything to it, to the business, or the cost of the doctors together as much to be very specific about it. So that should be moving forward, here, real quick. In two thousand and twenty, which is the upcoming year, that capital budget, which is a little over three pages, is two point, two million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. So that's a significant amount of money. Next year, if we were available to buy, it would be in two thousand and twenty, which is impossible. We would really require another one point, almost one point, oh, one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to begin to replace the equipment that we think is at a term or technologically not just usable, but it's behind the curve. Some of that is all too expensive to be trying to replace or repair. Two thousand and twelve, it would be one million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand. And if everything went well, two thousand and twenty-three, we'd drop down. We'd see it today to about four, four hundred and forty-seven thousand and we'd be able to replace most of the major capital, medical and other equipment in the hospital. What I'd like to point out here is that, in this particular budget, if we go back and look, the major items right now are light pack fifteens, which are the desensitators that people are shocked with when they have cardiac syndrome. What's interesting in healthcare, most of these manufacturers that life change to those, light pack fifteens which we have are coming to the end of their life, actually, within three or four months. What that means is, is they no longer really manufacture replacement parts, so repair becomes very hard to do. One of the things they're doing is no longer manning stations, the batteries, which are very important, which lasts about a year or two, the key to what's going on. Those are thirty thousand dollars a piece. I'll get to it in a minute, is we believe, which is important, is about eight of those this year are replacing their areas, including on, on the, a bit older, Ma, sorry, that is not a margin. Right, right. So, but if you go through that list, I mean, you'll see that there are significant pieces of equipment in there. One of the, one of the things that we worry about, we have something old on a place from the other hospital and the one that was put in search of years ago was fairly locked in. If you see those, that is normal, it's in a cabinet, pounding on it, two thousand, talking to the chair lighter company. That's a major one we lost in the future. We do hope that among OR lighting, it has built in a new surgical center and, well, actually, with the hospital in itself, the nursing center. They are, we're going to get a chance to go in and look at and perhaps choose lights out of their surgery center, which I think has eighteen or twenty-seven rooms or something like that, probably find some that are relatively new and replace ours with an L B, and no cost of, will cost us to have equipment. So we are working with them on that. One of the things we currently are looking at, and this may be in the current year, we're hoping would be released for a new 3D mammal, which is the current state of the art in mammography. We've lost a lot of mammal business, our women are not staying in town because the radiologists are basically saying, we want 3D mammal, we don't want the plain mammal. We're currently negotiating a lease contract for that and hopefully we'll be able to make that through. You have any questions, I'm going to go down, kind of up to those. So, you know, one of our big issues is, is not only are we unable to cover cash flow on our operational, we have not had any money in the last five, six years really to have just, to replace things, pieces of capital equipment that age or technologically are stagnant. So we should do the next one. We consider these to be two of the top colors. And before anybody asks me, I did go out and looked for a grant last year and they were not available. I'm currently sort of on the emergency management services advisory board on state, which is the group, the part of the state that handles the MS and all there. And last year I had a conversation with the administrator of that and that basically, state is no longer funding, running towards ambulances. They have determined that the responsibility of municipalities, the counties and that, they're moving towards the new technology and trying to help sort of advance in the technology area, not the basic ambulance. I think I talked to you all a few weeks before that we have the ambulance that you helped us get with the grant in two thousand and sixteen. And I currently have probably like a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it. We took our own fund three, two and a half years ago, after I got here, and we did have one of the two thousand and eleven three fifty, had the full ride train rebuilt. one of the two thousand and eleven three-fifties, had the full ride train rebuilt, which ended up costing us a little over twenty-eight thousand dollars to do that. We just took another one of the two thousand and elevens and had the engine rebuilt, but not the full ride transaction, which was transition or transit and all of that. And we spent nearly eighteen thousand dollars, and then afterwards, we had a couple other things that had done. So they are, they are somewhat down, but still knocked down. But we, right now, with a life span on the ambulances that you're, I found out, kind of, surveyed that, I talked to the director, that technically, most services are working, like the county service, like ours, that has a lot of models, are working about every three years, that ambulance is really reaching its lifespan, because of the, the volume of miles on it, and the way they're sort of, unlike ambulances in the city, they're forty-five or fifty, you know, when we do a transport, we're doing sixty, seventy, eighty, depending on, on what we're doing. So they're tough, tough miles on an ambulance. Um, so we are, we are really in the hole when it comes to ambulances. Right now, our two thousand and sixteen has an electric work, and we have mechanics that come in from Madison, who works on them. He's getting with, uh, the, the company that builds the ambulance, because we've got a little training for that, and electric work, and it's a fairly consistent problem with the, because of the technology thing. So, LifeTACs are a big thing, and ambulances are a big, big thing. Um, and even when we move forward as part of the ambulance service, uh, there are, there are items in that particular area that, um, we are really behind technologically, right, when it comes to what's happening, you know, the bigger services, obviously, to accomplish. But LifeTACs and the use of it is changing, and our machines are, are getting aged, you know. And then, um, you know, we've got old pressures, and this, this big thing has not been pointed out, if you have a heart attack, you like to have the best equipment. The, the newest, new technology, and actually, this was discussed at the last meeting, was automated compression, and what they first call pumbers, and they advance two or three times, is that, um, the likelihood of life, if you have a heart attack in your interim, the use of the automated compression greatly increases the probability of you surviving to get to the hospital and surviving the code in the hospital. In fact, they pointed out, in one case, somebody was kept on, on the stump of his six hours and came back out following another document, eight, what, seventeen, eighteen hours. Those are big medical centers, and they're just on both things, but it points to the fact that it's probably one of the most, one of the big things, is consistent compression. And through somebody who talks to the care of an A and M, typically, after two minutes of giving compression, the, whoever is doing it is, is not doing quality of compression as they were before, because the entire is quite, quite hard to do. So with that, I would end the last slide, which is about why we're really here, is how do you seriously consider providing us at least, so enough time to look at those two, two particular items that we're seriously concerned about. Uh, I know that maybe the possibility is, on leases, I know that recently you all looked, uh, at, at leasing, and, uh, we've had a little bit of investigation about it, but it hasn't really gone very far, because we, we can't really afford leasing costs on, 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 so with that, I would try answering a question.
Do you go back to your first slide?
Sure.
Number, okay, second. Just go through some, I don't know, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah.
Uh, we're showing a million dollar, million forty-two thousand dollar loss. How are we surviving that, with that loss?
What, we're, we're basically surviving on cash flow.
We're surviving, of course, the five hundred-
Five hundred, yeah, five hundred.
If we did not have that money from TMA, uh, where would we be?
And the other, that's not worth-
Where we would be is, the doors would either be closed, or somebody would have to come with a cash.
Right.
Now, what, what we're doing is, we're floating our accounts payable until we get TMA's money ready, but if you go to eighteen, uh, it's showing a four hundred and seven thousand dollar loss, and then-
Four hundred and seven thousand, okay. But that's with Medicaid.
Well, okay, forget, okay, just forget that one. In eight, nineteen, we're showing a nine hundred and forty-two thousand dollar loss. How have we been able to cover that loss?
Well, we're a part of it with TMA, because we-
With it, the vision dollars that we expect to be received, and then TMA funds up-
And then TMA?
We're living happy.
Let me jump into it.
Don't know that anybody really understands what the picture is, I really don't.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
What, what is, what is one payroll?
I'm a cash. Uh, it's, it's over three, it depends on the week, but it's right around three hundred thousand dollars would like now.
And how much cash have we got today, or could say at the end of the year?
Well, I, I think this morning, I saw, we have two hundred and seven thousand, you know, cash account. Uh, we have a little over a hundred thousand in, in the day fund, which is for specific emergency items that we have to look at, you know, about fifty or seventy thousand, I think, in what was reserved in cash, that made the offer.
One little hiccup, Medicare payers, you mean, they say, oh, I should tell you.
Well, for others to see, there's something wrong with that. I think everybody agrees that we need a hospital here. I think you're a business, just like we're a business. And everybody that wants who you're going, is a customer. Year after year after year, decade after decade, we hear the same thing, we see the same picture. If you have a business plan that's not working, it seems to me like you need a new business plan. And I don't know if what you've done, if you've gone out and you've tried to get help to develop a business plan that may work, but whatever you've done is not working. And you have to ask yourself, why is this not working? Why are so many people from Tyler County bypassing your hospital and going to Calabasas? Or they're going to Gainesville, and there's a reason for that. You just have to identify, what is that reason? Because if you don't have heads and beds out here, yeah, your revenue, I look at your, I look at your notice here, you gotta have heads and beds. You gotta figure out why you don't have heads and beds. You gotta have a business plan. For me, I need to see a business plan that's gonna work. I'm trying to see the same thing, time and time and time, it gets me off. Without a plan, how are you gonna fix it? It's always good and do, but it's never, okay, we reached out and we, we're working on a business plan, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna figure out, is it company reserves while we all have patients? What is the reason? I'm not sure it's not, well, why is it on set pieces very low? That's a question for y'all, I can't answer that. But until you can figure that out and come out with a business plan, I, I, I have reservations about what you're asking for.
Well, one of the, one of the reasons is, is bringing in Alliance and working with us on trying to help, and-
I'm gonna like, and, possible. First of all, thank you, man. It's great to be here with you guys, and y'all, y'all have been incredibly supportive of this hospital for years and years, and I appreciate that, I know there is, but Taylor County appreciates that. It's a great commission, and I'm telling you straight up, the board for the rest of this hospital is more best than this, this kind of scene in many, 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 many years. In spite of that, we've cut, we've, we've cut expenses about six million dollars. Our revenue has dropped faster than our, than our expense cut, and it's primarily due to legislative changes and changes in, in reimbursement from third-party payers, Blue Cross, UMA, and the like. Those are factors that you and I have any control over. Slave to that is, is a decrease in number of practitioners globally, which we can work and real work to fix, and have very successfully, we have a try to accomplish this. Until we can turn that around and bring positions in here that are really practiced here, and the community is comfortable with, we're gonna continue to struggle. This is one of the, I want to show all those things. We're, we, we are working really, really, really hard out there to keep this rate open. It is a struggle. We live, it's built on it now, from hand to mouth, on cash flow. That's all we got. And to the extent that we can, that we can, we can shepherd that and keep doors open, that's what we're doing. But it's one hit, and, and we're in trouble, we're in real trouble. Thanks to TMA, who extended our longevity to some extent. Your concern, aside from the fact that you won't see the hospital built as much as I do, your, your commitment is, is, is sustaining capital resources of the hospital, which you put very little into the hospital in the way of operating revenue, some, but not a lot. Our operating revenue springs from our operations, however, and what we see from, from TMA. We look to all for, for help with keeping the equipment functioning in the hospital open from that point of view. Amulets are a big part of that, showers are a big part of that, boilers are a big part of that, in fact, that's, that's what it's all about. We need your help in, in, in creating and sustaining the capital. And we're working like, like the dickens, creating and operating budgets that will ultimately lead to a level bottom line and a quality bottom line. As I mentioned, we have a relationship with Alliance that we, that we took on board in May, that's, there are some, some changes that we're implementing as a result of that, but we hope to see some significant increase in revenue streams from. Without any additional, without any additional cash requirements, they, they've got some good ideas, and working together with, with input from staff, because hospitals have good ideas too, we're, we're parlaying that into making a new program to, to bring that revenue up, the new revenue stream, it's a process. It's hard to make that happen. I'll give you details, if not in this meeting, I'll, I'll, we'll sit down alone, one, and I'll, I'll, I'll show you exactly the thing that we are attempting to implement, and I think it was something fair. From your point of view, we need your support in keeping the capital side of this operation functioning, because we have no way of doing it. We're simply not generating revenue to do that. And without it, we, no operating revenue is gonna, is gonna sustain it, if the boiler 's failed or the shower's failed, or the nurse's failed, or the ambulance is right down the road, we can't provide the assistance. Those, those of you, they obviously suspect, that's what you can do.
Yeah, my, my chair, yeah. We've talked a little bit, talked on the ground a little. Appreciate Mr. Fegel and her comment, because we probably need to take a boost, those are the, at our business plan. All of us, Alliance, Alliance, and I, I look to him to help you in this effort. But if you pointed out, while we're making these improvements in our business plan, we make that, I don't know, one year, two years, three years, we need to keep doors locked a little, we need to keep the amulets running, we need some infrastructure and materials. Which brings me to my point, back in the, uh, prior to the state of the time, when the hospital was paid off with the one cent sale tax, you got to keep a little portion of that, because you're gonna spend a little charge. There was this idea that we captured and devised that one cent sale tax in four parks. And before it got right, the sheriff got one of the four parks, one of the parks, which was the one cent sale tax. I want to refresh you, the board, which, one of those parks, and it gets drunk, we came to build a new J or some new chapel.
The concept-
Concept, the concept, yeah.
We didn't go long, it didn't spread. The concept that was presented was twenty-five percent for the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent for the hospital.
That, that's the part I'm getting to.
Right, it's twenty-five percent for, for infrastructure, I believe, and twenty-five percent for a building fund.
Okay.
That was what I would call a good concept.
Well, we didn't finalize this. No, we did have some part of that, and our plan was, was out there, start off, twenty-five percent, thanks to Sheriff, to go through the hospital. And if by recollection ends, that twenty-five percent would meet your needs for buying ambulance. What's twenty-five percent of the sale tax revenue?
Twenty-five percent, and I have calculated four hundred and seventy thousand seventy fifty.
So if you add four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that could buy a little time, buy some equipment, a trip to the new amulets, something that you need on that.
I'm not gonna say we could all go to New Hangars, because we have, we have-
I mean, you may already know what you got.
Yeah, but how could I just want capital, though?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's all, that's all I'm looking for.
Yep, and that, and, and when we, uh, continue this one cent tax, it was stipulated, and I feel you would want to suggest, we have this high of capital. And what you've got is, to me, I never, I didn't get a belief.
Absolutely.
Now, what, I'm just speaking in one committee, what do we need to, to free up for bed life with bed terms? That's twenty-five percent plus the AMH. With all the figuring we talk, we need a hospital. We can't survive without a hospital. It's essential that any community be in our side, has a good hospital, have a good skill system, and good county government, and you're not reporting your fault. You are a part of this, integral part of this commitment, and I support twenty-five percent, but can't do it themselves. And I say all that just to help us to discuss.
Well, that's something that we're gonna have to discuss, you know, in regular work being, and it would have to be voted on. And I know that, and I don't know about our heart department, but I know that we have great news in our heart department, and we have all the injections for heart protection, uh, also, um, so if, if there's something else that we could, um, that we could start to do.
No, I can, I mean, if you're trying to, if you're trying to use the one cent sale tax as a revenue stream, and for all of that stuff, you, you're, you're, you're pushing a moving target that you'll never get.
We have to provide heart care protection, and like, you know, we have to provide many other things, that's just in the city, we're saying, so it's a balancing act with us, you know, everybody's trying to hand out, and we want to put as much in your hand as we can, but we have other responsibilities also. But you can have all the best equipment in the world out there, and you don't have patients. And that's what jumps on when you're one of them. You don't figure out how you're gonna get heads and beds out there. And you haven't been successful so far.
Physicians, if we get physicians in a community, good ones.
And I, I, I can tell you for thirty years that I know of, recruitment of physicians is thing going on, how many have you got and how many have you kept? It's very difficult, you know?
It is very difficult.
And I, it, it, you know, I, I don't know how you solve that problem, because I don't think that's gonna work either.
I, I've talked to directors of, of residency programs in several, okay, Tom has too, and all those directors that tell you today, and this is horrifying, every one of those residents coming out of the residence program is ready to start packing, every one of them are looking for- Every one of them are looking for sign businesses, they're looking for, for contracts that accept two hundred thousand a year. They're looking for, they're looking for a big check. There's, the interest in, in, and social commitment to provide healthcare services by practitioners has evolved. And they're looking for making as much money as we can.
And I remember when, uh, when we were still at the old hospital, when, uh, when we were a little bit, uh, we'll help you with our assignment we did, and I remember they even offered to pay off medical schools.
Oh, that's.
For some reason, the victim, they could even give them a total of six.
Well, I'll tell you, that's, that's a fool's game. I have nev- I've been in this business for a long time, and I've seen, I have seen time and the time in our communities. But we've been able to send, send kids to ministry. It never pays out. It never.
The ones that already have gone to medical school, they offered, we'll pay all your debts from you, and they wouldn't come. So I understand, I know there's a problem to it.
I have recruited one physician in my lifetime by doing that, and you know how I did it? I paid his debt off that he had accrued from another county that he's become to my county. Now, that's what that county offers us, but it was still hanging in our pocket for, for our position. You know, there, recruiting physicians is difficult. It's not impossible. And there are, there are residents out there finishing their third, fourth, and fifth years that are looking for small unit practices where they can be physicians.
And Jim, you still have to address the problem of people that are bypassing this hospital to go somewhere else, for an emergency room visit. Uh, and, and you don't figure out why that, why is that, that people are bypassing this hospital? Is it your customer purpose? Is it your, um, level of care? What, I don't know, but what is it?
I'm, I'm, I doubt this level of care, this level of understanding. It's not understanding what the level of care is, and it's believing the, the rumors. This is why, this hospital provides extremely good care. And, and has, has state-of-the-art equipment and, and supplemental drugs.
And that's one of the things we looked at last year, and we're, we're working at the end, and life and the system in that is, is based on a physician. And trying to recruit some new physicians in here. Well, the faith wasn't when I looked, that based on what we give or what the cost of moving forward, or nearly the house, you know, or. But we're trying to balance that and figure out how to do that. I got random numbers today to look at the yard for this. And I think maybe between the physician component and hospital component, takes on seventy, seven hundred dollars, we probably made. Now, with over two million dollars, we probably made forty, forty thousand dollars, but more to the areas that, that may cover the extent. But we are definitely looking to try to figure out how to take that.
Now, and don't, I don't want anybody here to misunderstand my candor. We need a hospital here, and we need a successful hospital here, and that's what I want. And I think if you taught this to anybody, they would agree. We need it so we can service our people. We need it for economic development purposes. We need the hospital, but something is wrong.
I don't deny that there's been a lot of, of chatter in the social media about the hospital, maybe, uh, there has been. There's also been a lot of very positive chatter in the social media regarding this hospital and its emergency. This hospital, compared to other hospitals in some circumstances, this hospital provides extremely good service. I can attest to that.
I'm not disagreeing, Jim.
And my mother would be dead to that, if I had to attest to that.
Tell me it is wrong.
It is.
And that's what, I, I don't know what it is, but I want a hospital, I want to support our hospital. We need our hospital.
Yes.
And it's, if we can figure out how different, that's what we need to do.
That's what we're, that's what we're working on, and, and that's what Alliance brings to the table. And it clearly is what T M H has brought to the table, with their support. Now, we're, we're on the right track. I've been on this board now for, my, last year, after my ninth year.
Come on, let me.
I'm, 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 I'm out, so I gotta.
I want to say something to that. I've thought of a lot of their championship, the small county. And they all got the same issues with their hospital that y'all got. It's not, it just start here, it's in all small counties. There's just, there's just not the revenue. People use the mercy room and never pay the bill. Fifty percent of the people in mercy room never pay their bills. Never pay one dollar.
That's a significant problem.
And that really is an issue, and, and, but as far as I'm concerned, I back y'all, whatever base, keep the hospital going.
I tell you, this hospital, last year, what, what, last year, we gave it what, seven million dollars.
It's five million dollars in shares back then, too many, and I'm paying.
But that's not a, that's a cost, not a part of the.
That's, that's not true. That's, that's a significant supplement from your hospital to your position.
It is, and if you could get more of your people with good insurance that were stopped at this hospital, and you could talk along with what you have, I'd be nonchalant.
I wish I could say the first thing is good insurance, if I'm saying.
But I mean, insurance, there's no insurance. You go out there because you don't go to the doctor, you use that as your healthcare facility.
But when insurance companies have decided that they can play the same game Medicare and Medicaid has done, and, and negotiate contractual adjustments to the period that Medicare and Medicaid have, and cut our revenue streams the way they have, and by forcing patients to go to reference labs and not use our patient services, it's killing. We've lost millions of dollars in our patient revenue, because of that one factor alone, because carriers require their beneficiaries to go to reference labs. For the lab, when they can't write you.
We, we can have anyone having to do a platform, can, we can even collect form, which is.
We're drawing some, we could get.
Have to work. Well, the real thing is, we've lost probably every year about five hundred thousand dollars in benefits as a result of. We can try to arrange them with shortcomings for lab or request, and we actually draw up more requests. We tried to ask the lab corps, but they're not cooperative, and, 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 you know, for, for really no cost, so it means that, like you said.
When you know that we're, we're supporting the people here that are going to have problems, when you have.
I'm hoping to be a town about different things, not those black corps, but Walmart, Walmart, we need our hospital. We need our hospital to be successful, and I'm for the hospital, and I want it to, I want to see a good business plan. I want to see this thing term out built.
Alliance brought a business plan, started a business plan at the last board meeting.
Okay.
They are accepting input from employees and anyone else. And we, I don't doubt that it won't be part of their plan, but they are developing a plan.
Well, that's great, that's, that's great.
And they have in, in process right now of implementing part of it already, before we get the plan completed.
There are a number of things, a number of services that we've not really had the experience to provide. They're looking at as alternatives because of that resource, and do they, do they work with another area?
And that makes me feel better. I'm, I'm very.
That's a journey. With, without, uh, assistance on board, on the capital purchases. What I'm, my fear is individually, and I'm, I'm going to leave the minority out, I know that. But right today, they're talking about leasing a piece of equipment, piece of mani- from, from marketing, you know. The cost today of present equipment is about seventy-five hundred dollars a month, maintenance contract, uh, whether the lease. Another maintenance contract of a cash. There's a maintenance contract of the current, the county owns that piece of equipment.
You mean the current piece of equipment that's sold?
Was it sold?
No.
Presently, we're paying maintenance contract on this equipment. And they go through with this, uh, lease. What they're going to have is a maintenance contract and the cost of the lease. And if they continue down that track, those doors are going to close quicker. If we don't, if the county doesn't step in, step on the assistance of capital purchases.
Because they're.
Oh, come on, Mr. Page, that's a war.
Really, I want to, I want to cut you off now. All right, yeah. Mr. Fegel, I've developed a greater relationship while we've been on the board. We don't agree on everything in the world. We don't agree totally on the hospital, or hearts in the life of us. You brought up, we should, we have needs other than doctors more of hospitals for the one cent sale tax. And I agree, and you mentioned the fire department. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the needs that are fire services, maybe they're not capital needs, they're personnel.
Yes, sir.
And you can't use that one cent sale tax for personnel.
There are some needs identified from the fire department that are in capital provision, and I will also remind you that we are paying the fire trust lease, when I said sale tax.
Good. What I'm saying is, if I'm getting it, I think we have enough money there in this twenty-five percent. We may have to take a little bit, twenty-five percent, but we can call it a loan.
Yes, I know y'all have over, and have a good time with the pastor, but y'all have discussed taking a portion of that one cent sale tax and using it to pay leases on vehicles that the county operates.
And vehicles, yeah.
And vehicles too.
Yeah. I'm not playing, I'm not playing, I might move by lifting that up, but anyway, that's what I'm proposing. And that is into the position that I think, online is, you're just like I am, you want to keep the doors of the hospital open. I need the doors of the hospital.
Bill, Bill and I have had a lot of often, because we, 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 we debate, we disagree, and we agree. Bill brings a tremendous amount of positive things into our board.
And we agree on the base, and we agree on the public. And we don't agree on everything, and we try to work it out till we know it's wrong.
But, and so we have different, uh, different ideas, but at the end of the day, we want very long. At the end of the day, I'll think of anybody here that doesn't support the hospital and wants what's best for an hospital. And that's the only reason that I bring up some of the things I was quite candid about, is because I want our hospital to be successful for everybody. So don't get me wrong, that I'm anti-hospital, I am not anti-hospital. I want what's best for a hospital, and I want a hospital with doors to remain open.
I think you're all the same.
And we're going to help it all that we can. I can tell you that.
One thing you need to, need to remember in the back of your mind, though, every time a piece of this county's equipment needs fixing, because the transmission wall doesn't come on again, that comes out of operating revenue, that comes out of house. Maybe we need to look at how we use that funding to see if we can extend the, the, the money later, extend the coverage to that, to maintaining the house equipment.
Are you referring to the one cent, the great care and tail tax?
Yeah, yeah.
So the restrictions that we have on that are not only by our own ordinance, but in all the care, I can remember we can do that. It's during the ordinance, like for capital, capital, and prison side. But even if we take some ordinance, would we be able to use that funding for any kind of the capital, um, the algorithms, I'm not sure.
You can, I, I dropped this a little bit. We just got a three hundred thousand dollars in newfound cash. So we'll have a lot of it. What about eschewing that, and the, on just to cover repair and relieve the, the drain on our operating revenue to that extent for as long as it lasts? Unless you've got some other claim for that. I'm just trying.
Well, that, that's something we need to really, I think.
Everybody wants to.
See, this is exactly the problem.
I want to try to listen.
You, you, honestly, any drain on operating revenue puts us even closer to that, that deuce section area, that building.
You didn't change the ordinance, but you all, all committed to oscillation of this county that they were going to be used as capital assets. If you change that ordinance and use it for operating expenses, you know, some line will go to the.
I'm not going to do that, because you're absolutely right of what we committed to do. I'm not for changing that.
But what you can do, and, and, um, I'm not a fan of leases, because I don't like to pay that high price for it. All you got to do is borrow it, tax-free, or whoever, uh, update the sales tax to capitalize it with the sales tax and move on.
Listen, I, I want to conclude this, this, because with her, I appreciate y'all being here. And I'm going to tell each one of y'all personally that in your time, and I know you take your personal time to serve on this floor, and I think you two are, y'all, you're harnessing it, you're trying to do what's right for the hospital. I appreciate that. I appreciate what y'all do. I know you pay us not very high for doing that, but, um, and, and we're committed. And, and, and we're going to, we're going to do all that we can, okay? We want the hospital to be successful, and we want the best that we can have, and we're, we're going to do something. We just don't know right now what it's going to be. You know, everybody wants a little piece of the money that's coming in, isn't it? You know, it's, we're going to do the very best we can. I appreciate y'all being here, uh, appreciate your patience, and.
I think, I think there are very few residents in this county that would, that would, that would say differently. Everybody in this county would love to have healthcare that they can rely on, healthcare that they can access up there in trust. That's what we all, and that's what we're all.
And then we're in it to get.
Yes, we are definitely.
And I would offer it just like Jim has been out, and he's walked around looking at a lot of people and stuff.
You say a number of healers with this, which is.
And, uh, I said that in town the other day, so if any of you that would like to come out, we'll take you around and kind of show you, you know, what the equipment is, what's, what's being, and so that you have a better idea. And, and answer, you know, call me anytime, I'll try to answer any questions you have. And if you have a complaint, call me, call Mary, you know, we try to deal with all of them. I, I do appreciate you giving us the time, you know, and the consideration.
One of my, my likes of yours, I do appreciate the exposure we've come to, to support the hospital, and thank you, and.
Yeah, and thank y'all all for coming, yeah.
My hat's off to you, and most of y'all out there don't have to use field down hospitals, you can use hospitals on western property. And that's the business where you can be, um, counted. But I've been out in that, in that room many days, many nights, just even back in on the porch to go to the next county. And I watch people from other counties that come around this place, come here, through here. There's a reason they come, because others close their doors to this. I'm telling you that I do support you, my hat's off, my hat's off to you for your good intentions and begging us to do something for those people that can't afford themselves. Now, with that said, I, I, we don't want to relate the time, but once, let's come out and talk with my hat off, please. Because that's, the problem you've got is what Jim said, all counties, all, all counties have a same problem. If you don't really ask them, you talk to them. I do that all the time. I don't know all of your problems, my devil's your capital, and we do need to check that out. I have an experience with my brother at Kansas, about two years ago, he was on the way to Gainesville. Amnesties broke down in Cross City. They had to call another ambulance to get it in here and win it. Now, we can, because we have a position, choose help and dump it, it will be charged to us. Thank you. So we need to do the best we can. There is something that we are building in our, to get by, to do the best for others. But healthcare, if you don't have good healthcare, that means you're going to die. And when you're dead, you don't need some healthcare. You need to lower things, something that they become, which is the rest, okay? So we are going to do the best we can while I'm here. I'm going to jump on that board, it's bad, but you need to do something with this hospital. I don't mind being on.
I want to say, just recently, we agreed to lease some dump trucks and some trash trucks, and we can lease them cheaper than we can really keep them up and replace transmission. We can actually lease dump trucks for what it costs to replace transmission in one for a whole year. We cannot just lease the dump truck for what it's all for, replace transmission in one for a whole year. Have y'all researched lease now?
We looked a little bit at it, but not really done, just got a couple little business information from different places. I knew we hadn't really pursued it because we also really didn't have the cash flow to handle some of this.
I mean, we have all the weeks of progress needs, Kevin, for this, to do that very thing.
Well, I've found that just as many people as I could, see where it's going to go. So we've been thinking it's a no brainer, to rent one for a year, to rent new dump trucks when it's all that kind of math about transmission for a while.
I mean, I'm at the same opportunity as well when you have a business, but we're certainly on that.
Long as it's a good business, something...
I talked about that last figure at the chamber meeting because I shared with him that we had been successful in obtaining board approval, and our attorney approved, and we had actually gone through the entire process, and were successful in getting approval for some licenses. And...
We're going to start exploring that part, Director. Just give us your home office, give us my ideas about what's out there. I think it's a little bit different than how you...
I...
But we are going to look at it, see what's more difficult or not. I want to probably do some comparison about cost of purchase from our term.
I mean, I must have broken down what it's all about, I swear. I know the place, you know, you don't want to be drunk down.
You've got a bar in the mall, didn't you?
I got some mall. And they bring ambulance by mall, they're a bit, you know, someone that hit that barrier. Thank the Lord, I wasn't having a heart attack, I thought I was having one, but I was dehydrated. I made it to town happy, but, you know, I was evaporating some air, right? But I appreciate you all, and thank you, we appreciate them, we work where we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.